September fourteenth, but is it September twenty first, two thousand twenty one? I'd like to call this meeting to order and ask that you please rise for the invocation and pledge of allegiance from Mr. Bailey. Father God, we thank you for this opportunity. We, we thank you for allowing us to come together to once again glorify your name in all that we do. We thank you for sparing us once again with this storm, Father God, and in keeping us all safe and that there was no loss of life. We ask you please continue to watch over us, protect us, and give us strength and wisdom as we move forward as a community. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, on to item three. Motion finding that the advanced posting and notice requirements of Article eight point one two zero zero of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Orange, Texas have been met in relation to all minutes impending ordinances and resolutions on this agenda and that the reading of such items be confined to the captions as are accret upon by the ordinances and resolutions. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Can we have a motion in a second? Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Okay, most, motion passes. Okay, on to item four, citizen comments. At this time, comments will be taken from the audience on any subject matter, whether or not that item is on the agenda. All comments are limited to a maximum of three minutes for each speaker. Your comments are appreciated. As the Texas Open Meetings Act does not allow the council to respond to items not listed on the agenda, your comments will be duly noted by the council and forwarded to the appropriate department for prompt consideration. A member of the audience that desires to speak during the city council's consideration of any specific agenda item is requested to notify city staff prior to the start of the meeting. At this time, there are no names on my list, but if there are anyone who would like to address council, please come forward, state your name and address, and you have three minutes.
My name is Jack Kirkendall. I live at nineteen eleven West Ada Drive. I, I had an issue. I'm glad that the storm didn't tear us up, and I'm glad that y'all didn't have a meeting last week because I was very upset with a certain issue. But today I came to tell the city council, Mayor Spears, and Mr. Coons, what a great job you guys are doing. I have a house that's at nineteen oh three West Ada. Right now, the permit's being held up on account of I didn't meet my obligation by August the eighteenth to get the house up to standards. I went through COVID the whole month of August. I lost two workers, and I lost a cousin through it who actually works for me. So during the, this past week, and I'll make it real quick, I drove around my neighborhood, and we come up with five major safety items, which Kelvin drove around Friday and looked. One of those safety items still has not been addressed. So I understand now when Mr. Coons told me that they were going to follow the process, I understand the importance of that process. There's a lot of things that are going on out there that Kelvin and them can't keep up with, you know? In fact, you guys may look at bringing somebody else on to help them. So for me, Mr. Coons, I publicly apologize for our phone call, and I appreciate you going by the, the process, so to speak, and Mr. Kelvin as well. So that's, that's all I have to say. And thank you, Mr. Spears, for the conversation, which was really great.
Well, thank you. I'm happy to have you here, man.
No problem. Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else who'd like to address the council? Yes, sir.
Well, good morning to the mayor, city councilman, and fellow citizens. I'm here to, the issue on the Rebeck Crossing, which is the, the real name of it. I was just trying to get a follow-up on whether it's the diagnosis or progress on it being open or permanently closed. And to, for lack of a better word, play an anonymous snitch. I was headed northbound. I'm sorry, I was headed southbound on Bob Hall. And just so happened when I got ready to cross the eastbound service lane, there was this gentleman who decided to take that break in the traffic and go west on the eastbound lane to catch that little nook behind Chick-fil-A. So this is things people are doing, and I witnessed them. And I don't know why there isn't any more people here. I guess they assume that it's a done deal, or maybe they feel like they're kind of like powerless in it, but I do know that it still is affecting a lot of people on that end of town. So. Roy Nally, I'm sorry if I didn't, I'm sorry if I didn't announce myself, but yes, but that's my concern is what, what is the deal update or anything on the Rebeck Crossing scenario? All right.
Thank you. And if you stick around, tonight's, today is a really, really, really long meeting, but it's on the agenda today. All right, is there anyone else who'd like to speak? All right, if not, we will close citizen comments and move on to city announcements. Mr. Coons?
We have some, and while she's walking, I want to say, Mr. Kirkendall is always very professional to me.
Yeah, he's a good guy.
Yeah.
Ms. Dallas, how you doing?
Good morning, Mayor and Council. For those of you who don't know, my name is Leanne Dallas, and I'm the event manager for the City of Orange Convention and Visitors Bureau. Coming up on October first and second, we have our inaugural Orange Tober Festival. We have been, kind of had some hopes and dreams for this for quite some time. When I started in October two thousand nineteen, COVID pushed a little, a little back, and so we're excited to have it this year. I, I know this is a super long meeting, so I'll do a short recap. This is a family-friendly event. It is free admission. There are no tickets. You don't have to purchase any tickets. A few things that we will have today in, in less than an hour, we'll have eleven thousand pumpkins delivered with twenty different varieties, and so there, that's quite a, quite a...
Bunch.
Yeah, yeah. And so I couldn't, it's kind of left me speechless, so it was, it was fun when, when it was an idea. And we got two hundred and ten hay bales delivered yesterday, so we'll make that display. Confirmed yesterday, we have eighty-five retail and information booth vendors that we'll have out there. We have eleven or twelve gumbo cook-off teams that are signed up. That's with the Chamber of Commerce. We have a lot of organizations, and I hope I named them all. Chamber of Commerce, Orange County Disaster, Rebuild, United Way, Lines, Orange Lines Club, Little Cypress Lines Club, Texas A&amp;M Ag Extension with the county. Shangri-La and Stark is, are gonna give some giveaways out there, and I'm sure I'm, Rotary. I'm sure I missed someone, and I'm very sorry, but a lot of local organizations, if you or anyone you know needs volunteer hours, there's a staff of three that are gonna be putting out all of those pumpkins, so we're gonna take any volunteers that we can get. And if not, we hope you can bring your family. There's tons of food trucks and music and all kind of stuff that we'll have out there. So we hope y'all can come in.
All right, thank you.
October first and second.
And thank you. Very excited about this. When this council and its staff, as everybody has tried to rebuild our city, the best way that you bring a community together is by bringing families together. And when you give families opportunities to enjoy one another within their own city limits and not having to, you know, go out of town, like you've heard people say for years, it's a wonderful opportunity. So thank you to everyone involved. We appreciate it. Okay, on to Chief Frinson.
Mayor, I just want to take a little bit of y'all's time this morning. I had hoped to talk to you last week due to the storm. We got postponed. Ten days ago, the marked anniversary of probably one of the worst days in the history of the United States. Nine eleven, the towers fell, and over three thousand innocent people lost their lives. There were three hundred and forty-three New York firemen that died that day doing their job. Over sixty police officers died that day doing their job. And even though it was a horrible event, an event we hope that we will never witness anything like that again in, in our history, there was some good that came from that. There was a lot of attention paid to the people that were doing their job and lost their lives. Previous to that, police departments always had a federal agency. They had the FBI, they had the Department of Justice, they had a funding stream that took care of police departments throughout the United States. But the fire departments never enjoyed that funding stream because anything fire-related was all on the state level. There was nothing on the federal level. But after nine eleven, federal government realized how important fire departments were and established funding streams, not only through FEMA, but through Department of Homeland Security, Port Security Grants, things like this. And the City of Orange has been blessed to, in the last twenty years, Orange Fire Department has received over two million dollars in grants from the federal government. And so even though it's a day we want to remember the sorrow for the ones that lost their lives, I'm still very grateful that those lives didn't, those people didn't just give their lives in vain. So with that, we had a challenge coin struck this year from the Orange Fire Department in memory of nine eleven, and I'd just like to share that with each of the council members.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Chief.
Appreciate it, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. If you've never gotten one of these challenge coins before, they're very, very special. I've had a chance to get several of them from different entities across the state of Texas. It's kind of like you get a chance to collect them, but they mean so much more. It's not like a baseball card or something that's not, you know, that's just of not a value. This is something that's heartfelt, and so thank you very much. We appreciate it. On to the consent agenda. July sixth, two thousand twenty-one, Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting Minutes. July sixth, two thousand twenty-one, Special Call City Council Meeting Minutes. July twenty-first, two thousand twenty-one, Planning and Zoning Commission and City Council Special Call Meeting Minutes. July twenty-first, two thousand twenty-one, Special Call City Council Meeting Minutes. August tenth, two thousand twenty-one, Orange Economic Development Corporation Meeting Minutes. August seventeenth, two thousand twenty-one, Special Call City Council Meeting Minutes. August twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-one, Regular City Council Meeting Minutes. And August thirty-first, two thousand twenty-one, Special Call City Council Meeting Minutes. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Can we have a motion in a second? Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Thank you. Item seven, consider an ordinance adopting a budget for the fiscal year beginning October first, two thousand twenty-one, and ending on September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two, in accordance with the Charter of the City of Orange, Texas, which will require a record vote. First reading was August thirty-first, two thousand twenty-one. Ms. Zito.
Yes, Mayor and Council, this is our final reading of the ordinance to adopt our budget. In the, in the ordinance itself, starting on page fifty-four, each paragraph in the section, section two and on, tells you exactly how much dollars for each fund is in the budget, and the total of all of those, the total of our budget is fifty-four million seven eighty-one one thirty-six. And we went over that the, the last meeting. We've had some workshops. This is just the final approval of our budget for next year. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Do we have any questions? All right, do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Can we have a motion in a second? Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
And I will say aye as well. Okay, thank you. That motion passes. On to item seven B. Consider a motion ratifying the budget for the fiscal year beginning October first, two thousand twenty-one, and ending on September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two, will raise more total property taxes than last year's budget by an amount of three hundred and ninety-six thousand five hundred and sixty-three dollars, which is, which is a five point zero nine percent increase from last year's budget. The property tax revenue to be raised from new property added to the tax roll this year is one hundred and fifty-seven thousand five hundred and sixty-nine dollars. Ms. Zito.
Yes, Mayor, this motion is a legality to ratify our budget. It acknowledges that this budget will raise more property tax revenue than the last year's budget, but that's not because we raised our tax rate, it's because our property values went up. And as you can tell by the new property added to our tax roll, we even had new property. Instead of just the property values right up, we also have new properties coming onboard. So this motion is just to ratify our budget and acknowledge that fact.
Okay. All right, do we have any questions? If no questions, do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Can we have a motion in a second? Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. On item seven C. Consider an ordinance making a tax levy and fixing the maintenance and operations tax rate, debt service tax rate, and total tax rate for the City of Orange, Texas, for the fiscal year beginning October first, two thousand twenty-one, and ending September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two, upon all taxable property in the City of Orange, Texas on January first, two thousand twenty-one, according to the laws of Texas, the charter provisions, and the ordinance of the City of Orange, Texas, and providing that the said taxes levied shall be collected. A following motion must be made. As is read, I move that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of zero point eight zero five nine zero per one hundred, which is effectively a three point four eight percent increase in the tax rate, requires a record vote. First reading, October, August thirty-first, two thousand twenty-one. Ms. Zito.
Yes, Mayor, so this is our final reading of our tax ordinance to adopt a tax rate of point eight oh five nine oh, which is the exact same as last year. The reason why you said it raised the tax rate is because of the calculation. It's comparing it to last year's property taxes and the tax collected, so therefore the rate is exactly the same for our citizens. It's just the way the calculations work. And so that you'll be reminded that the county calculates, calculates our rates. We adopt the, our rate to levy taxes on, but they calculate also a debt service rate, which is point oh nine nine two nine. Part of our total rate that we adopt includes that debt portion, which is the amount of money from the, the taxes that we set aside each month to pay our bond payment. And the balance of the payments from property taxes equals two point seven zero six six one, which they call the maintenance and operation rate. And that's what operates the city, that pays our, our expenses, our payroll, and everything like that. So if you have any questions on the tax rate, but be reminded this is exact, no increase, this exact tax rate as last year.
Okay, do we have a mo, if we have a motion, it has to be read as it is stated below. Okay?
I make a motion. I moved that the property tax rate be increased by adoption of a tax rate of zero point eight zero five nine zero per one hundred dollars, which is effective, effectively an three point four eight percent increase in the tax rate.
Okay, so we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have a motion in a second? Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Hannigan, I mean, Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Okay, and I vote aye as well. Thank you. Motion passes. Item seventy, consider an ordinance amending the adopted budget for the fiscal year beginning October first, two thousand twenty, and ending on September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one, in accordance with the Charter of the City of Orange, Texas. Ms. Zito.
Yes, this is our semi-annual amendments for our budget for this year. This is twenty-one, we're just cleaning it up. This is what we have to do. So these motions also, by Charter, must be approved by y'all. On page sixty, I prepare y'all a recap of all the amendments. Page sixty-one is the details for each one, and page sixty-six is our report out of our software, if you're so inclined to see every single detail. But basically, during the year, we might need a little bit more funds in this, in this fund, or a little less in this one. If you'll remember earlier in the year, I don't remember what month, but we approved to reduce our inter-fund transfer between the Water and Sewer Fund and the General Fund to help out the Water and Sewer Fund because they were having so many unexpected breaks. That is being approved in this. That was a large amount, seven hundred and seventy thousand. So that's a budget amendment to make that change. Several of the amendments are just projects that this is kind of cleaning up for the year, but projects that didn't get finished prior year, we roll them forward. This is how we do that. One thing that we did have to take out of reserves, which is a budget amendment taking out of reserves, is our payment to line those last domers, the, when they had a, a reevaluation of their property, and we had to refund their IDC. So that was three hundred and eight thousand. But the majority of them are just normal everyday or rolling projects forward, lining the last domers, and the inter-fund transfer were the big-ticket items that were unusual that I wanted to point out.
All right, thank you. Ms. Zito, do we have any questions for Ms. Zito? If not, do we have a motion?
Motion.
Can we have a motion in a second? Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Item seven E, consider an ordinance amending, oh, seven E, F, and G. I'm sorry, those are tabled to the next meeting. Sorry about that.
But you still need to read them, though, Mayor, if you would.
Okay, seven E, which is consider an ordinance amending certain portions of Appendix A, Section eleven point one zero zero of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Orange, Texas pertaining to utility service rates and charges. Seven F is consider an ordinance amending certain portions of Appendix A, Section eleven two zero zero of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Orange, Texas pertaining to utility service rates and charges. And item seven G, consider an ordinance amending certain portions of Appendix A of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Orange, Texas pertaining to garbage and trash collection services. At this time, those will be tabled, and we will move...
But Mayor, if you would, if you don't mind, under the, under seven G, garbage and trash collection, we do have a representative from Waste Management here, and we'd like her just to address a couple of concerns.
Yes, Ms. Terry, please come forward.
Yes, I will remember Terry Woodson from Waste Management.
And it'd be discussion only, so no action.
Thank y'all so much for giving me a few moments of your time. We have the district manager, Michael Johnson, here from the Beaumont office that provides your services. The last few weeks have been the most trying in my career, and I think Michael Johnson will tell you the same thing. The, the whole issue with the COVID illnesses for our employees, plus the labor shortages that we've also been experiencing, and then you throw, even though it was a tiny storm, we all had to prepare like it was a big storm, it just made the perfect storm. So consequently, your services were lacking. We are aware of this. We have put every extra resource we could get our hands on. As we reached out, in normal situations, when you've had hurricanes in the past, you can remember, we never missed a beat because we had teams from all over the nation that we could call in. The problem is, what we experience with the COVID and the labor shortages is all over the country, and we had nobody to pull in to help us. One day, or three days, we got one driver, and he was driving so far, they didn't want him working fifteen hours, so he had to, we had to accommodate for his time to drive here. So it's been really difficult for our employees. We had twenty-five percent of the staff at our Beaumont office out at one time. But we are very confident. Michael Johnson is very com, and by the way, he was sick with COVID also, and his wife. And they both recovered beautifully, and we're very blessed by that. We feel very confident that we should get caught up this week. We are working with Mr. Coons on looking at the areas that we missed for over a week, and we'll be discussing more with him the next day to see what adjustments need to be made on our part for that. Any questions I can answer for you? We appreciate y'all so much.
Yeah, I just want to say thank you for coming. You know, a lot of us got hit up repeatedly through social media, through cell phones, text messaging, the gas stations, at the grocery store, and people wanted to know what was going on. And you know, our response is, it's never an excuse, it was an explanation. Just to let people know that COVID happened, it happened at my job. You know, just a few months ago, we, before we knew it, there was thirty people that had COVID just in the area, an area that I work in. And so it can happen. And so we appreciate you coming and saying a few words so that the community understands we're all in this together, and, you know, we've been through storms, and hurricanes, and ice storms, and COVID, and it seems like every time something happens, we find a way to rise above. So we'll get through this one just as we have before, so thank you.
And we're also very proud to provide your solid waste services at your event coming up in October. And if I'd have known there was gonna be gumbo, I would have made arrangements to be here, so I'm a little upset I didn't know about the gumbo, but next time. Y'all, thank y'all very much.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay?
Thanks, Mayor.
On to, yes, sir, on to item seven H. Consider an ordinance by the City of Orange, Texas, City denying the distribution cost recovery factor rate increase request of Energy Texas Incorporated filed on or about August thirty-first, two thousand twenty-one, settling just and reasonable rates for Energy Texas Incorporated for service within the municipal limits, finding that the meeting complies with the Open Meetings Act, making other findings. Mr. Coons?
Mayor, Council, again, this is one of those where Energy is asking for a rate increase. Again, we, along with many other municipalities, engaged Lawton Law Firm, they review it. At this time, they are recommending to all the cities, which includes us, to deny the rate increase. So again, if that is something y'all want to do, to go along with the recommendations, typically we do, then we would need y'all's approval to deny that request.
Okay, do we have a motion to deny?
Motion.
Second.
Can we have a motion in a second? Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Coons. First reading, consider an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Orange, Texas, providing that any street, road, boulevard, pathway, or trail acquired by the City of Orange through donation agreement, purchase, plan dedication, gift, grant, conveyance, inter-local agreement, eminent domain, or other legal method as a public roadway and serves a public purpose, finding that this ordinance is beneficial to the health, safety, and general welfare of the city, providing a severability clause, providing an effective date, repealing all ordinances in conflict with this ordinance, and making certain findings thereto. Mr. Knopf?
Yes, sir, this is an ordinance that codifies what is common practice and common law, that whenever the city acquires a street, whether it's through an installation, whether it's through constructing a street, such as the future street out at the Eagle Point area, or, you know, just through contract, or any other legal means, that then those streets become public streets and are not public, private streets. And as public streets, then the public has a right to travel on those streets, that they're not restricted in any way. But this just simply codifies it and puts it in the Code of Ordinances.
Okay. All right, do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
And Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Knopf. Item eight A, consider a resolution approving an EDC infrastructure grant agreement with Columbanus Motorsports, Phase Two, LLC thirty-five hundred IH10 West, Orange, Texas, seven seven six three two, in an amount not to exceed one hundred thousand dollars. Mr. Drehan?
Yes, sir, so Mayor and Council, this is a follow-up to this morning's EDC meeting, and basically it zeroes in on the incentive agreement and the public approval process. We've met the sixty-day waiting period. The EDC formally approved a motion to move it to the council agenda. This is the first reading. In two weeks, we'll come back and do the final reading, and then we'll sign off on the agreement subject to final completion of Phase Two and specifically the inspections. But the project is really moving at a good pace, and Mr. Frye has announced a big weekend coming up in October, which will be October fifteenth and sixteenth at the site, and more information will be forthcoming. But we're very happy to have this new project in the City of Orange, and this particular agreement just moves that project forward. I'll turn it back over to you.
Okay. Any questions or comments from Mr. Drehan? If not, do I have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Can we have a motion in a second? Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
And Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Drehan. Consider a resolution of the City Council of the City of Orange, Texas, approving a resolution of the Orange Economic Development Corporation, author- authorizing the issuance of the Orange Economic Development Corporation Sales Tax Revenue Refund- Refunding Bonds, Series twenty-twenty-one, approving the issuance of the bonds and the plan of financing authorized thereby, and financing documents resolving other matters incident and related to the issuance of the bonds. Mr. Goodson?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. As you are aware, uh, the, uh, Economic Development Corporation has previously, uh, issued, uh, sales tax revenue bonds. They had revenue bonds in two thousand and seven that were refunded in twenty sixteen. We have outstanding two thousand and twelve sales tax revenue bonds, uh, that the EDC moved to, uh, refund, uh, with certain parameters, uh, uh, to be effective, uh, with a sale, uh, on September the ninth and a closing anticipated for October, uh, the thirteenth. Uh, that sale, uh, was conducted through your financial advisors, uh, U.S. Capital Advisors and Mr. Gilli. Uh, the sale, uh, was for the refunding of approximately four point three million dollars worth of bonds. Uh, those bonds, uh, have been sold, uh, at a, uh, a, um, premium so that the par amount of our future bonds, uh, pr- if they're approved by the Attorney General for the Series twenty-twenty-one will be three million four hundred and eighty thousand dollars. There was a premium of six hundred and forty-four thousand, seven hundred and seventy-nine dollars. Uh, at that, plus, uh, the, uh, uh, EDC, uh, anticipates using approximately three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars of money that has been accumulated in the debt service reserve to help refund, uh, and put into escrow the money necessary to pay off the twenty, uh, twelve bonds on October the thirteenth. Uh, in place of the cash escrow, uh, you will now have a, uh, a, uh, fidelity insurance bond issued through Build America Mutual, a double-A bonding company, that, uh, will, uh, securitize the reserve fund that's required on the, the ordinance. Uh, it was mentioned earlier, and it's, um, my oversight in discussing this with the EDC, that I didn't, uh, note, uh, again, the good work of the city in managing its financial affairs as, uh, Mr. Drehan pointed out. And I did want to say that, uh, the, um, uh, prior to the, uh, uh, pricing of the bonds, uh, S and P Global Rating Service had, uh, rated the underlying bond issue with a long-term rating of A, stable, an excellent rate. Thanks to the issuance of the universal bond insurance, uh, the, this particular series went off at a rating of double-A stable. So again, the, while the bonds will have coupons of five percent and two percent, the really true effective interest rate is one point two seven percent because this takes into consideration the six hundred and forty-four thousand dollars of cash that was paid by Baird, uh, at the closing. Uh, this also allows for, uh, the debt service to be, uh, incrementally raised, uh, after these first couple of years to an almost level debt service for the remaining eight years, uh, till this thing matures. And it has the same ending maturity as your prior two thousand and twelve bonds. So there was a requirement that we couldn't extend the debt. It had to be at a, uh, a cost savings. And there had to be a, uh, what we call a present value savings, and that was calculated at over twelve percent. So we do recommend that the council approve the resolution. And this will then be sent to the Attorney General along with our bond transcript for approval.
Okay, thank you so much, Mr. Goodson. Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second.
Okay, motion in a second. Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
And Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
All right, thank you. Motion passes. Can't wait to pay that thing off.
Yeah.
All right, item eight C, consider a resolution of the City of Orange, Texas, authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with Old Orange Cafe for disaster-related catering services for city employees and approved support personnel. Mr. Kuntz?
Uh, Mayor and Council, again, we, uh, first of all, the Deputy Chief Brown was unable to attend today. So, uh, we did go out for, uh, proposals on the disaster contract. We got one, um, one interested party, which is Old Orange Cafe and David Claybar. He has serviced the, uh, the city, uh, in years past. And, um, you know, he met everything and, and we recommend that we go with him.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
And Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
All right, thank you, Mr. Kuntz. Item eight D, consider a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a memorandum of understanding for the City of Orange to participate in the Texas A and M Forest Service Incident Management Team. Mr. Kuntz?
Mayor and Council, again, um, in order to take advantage of some of this free training for the incident management team, we do need to have a, um, MOU, ma- uh, memorandum of understanding with the, uh, folks up at, uh, Texas A and M.
Okay. All right, do we have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second.
Can we have a motion in a second? Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
And Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Okay, item eight E, consider a resolution of the City Council of the City of Orange, Texas, to adopt, reaffirm civil rights policies for the city and pertaining to the Texas General Land Office, DR four-three-three-two, Community Block Grant Disaster Recovery Programs, CDBGDR. Ms. Zito?
Yes, Mayor. This resolution is to adopt and reaffirm certain civil rights policies in accordance with the regulations governing our CDBG disaster recovery grants that we were already awarded. Um, the grants are like the acquisition grants that is gonna help qualified citizens in flood-prone areas perhaps get buyouts or get, um, out of their homes or whatever. And we also have the infrastructure grants, which includes projects like our public safety radio tower, extending the concrete lining in Cooper's Gully, uh, new box culverts on Highway one oh five, the fire truck that we purchased, high clearance fire truck, um, and our search and rescue vehicles, and a few more. So, uh, this is, uh, just a formality. The city must adopt and implement these policies to comply with the requirements of this grant.
Okay. And it's a wonderful grant. Like you just said, the things that you just mentioned are-
It is.
Especially with all the problems we've seen over the years with hurricanes and inclement situations. So this is a very big deal. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Can we have a motion in a second? Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
And Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Okay, thank you so much, Ms. Zito. Also, um, that CDBGDR acquisition program, the, the, the period ends October fifteenth, if I'm not mistaken?
That is correct. And we do have a representative from our new grant administrator, Melinda Smith is here. She's back here. If anybody had a question for her, she could answer that question or she can answer afterwards. But you are correct, that, uh, application period will end October fifteenth. Is that correct?
Well, maybe those who are here from the local media may have questions for you because we definitely want people to be a part of that if they so wish to engage in that process. So thank you for coming. We appreciate it. On to item eight F. Consider a resolution of the City Council of the City of Orange, Texas, selecting a service provider to perform appraisal services in conjunction with funding through the Texas General Land Office, Community Development Block Grant Disaster Recovery Acquisition Program, Contract Number twenty dash zero six-six dash zero three-nine dash C two-five-eight. Ms. Zito?
Yes, this resolution to award a contract for, um, appraisal services. So this will help this acquisition project, this grant. Um, if we do acquire properties, we have to have them appraised. We did an RFP, um, followed all our city protocol, but, uh, we only received one proposal. So therefore, we recommend awarding it to Archstone Group.
Archstone, okay. All right, do we have a motion?
Motion. Second.
Can we have a motion in a second? Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
And Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Zito. Item eight G, consider a resolution of the City Council of the City of Orange, Texas, selecting a service provider to perform title services in conjunction with funding through the Texas General Land Office, Community Development Block Grant Disaster Recovery Acquisition Program, Contract Number twenty dash zero six-six oh three-nine C two-five-eight. Ms. Zito?
So this resolution is to award the contract for the title arc for the acquisition, uh, program with our CDBGDR funding. Um, we did RFP, following all our city protocol. We received only one proposal. And therefore, we recommend that we award this contract to the secu- Security Abstract Entitled Company.
And that's local here, too?
That was local.
Okay. All right, do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Can we have a motion in a second? Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
And Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Onto item eight H. Consider a resolution of the City Council of the City of Orange, Texas, designating authorized signatories for contractual documents and documents for requesting funds pertaining to the Texas General Land Office, DR four-three-three-two, Community Development Block Grant Disaster Recovery Program, Acquisition Contract Number twenty oh-six-six oh-three-nine C two-five-eight. Ms. Zito?
Yes, this resolution is to update the authorized personnel that are signers for all the documents for these grants. This is, this particular resolution is for the acquisition grant with the CDBGDR funding. And this is just to remove, uh, employees that are no longer here and update that with, uh, the current personnel.
Okay. All right, do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
And Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Eight I, consider a resolution of the City Council of the City of Orange, Texas, Designating Authorized Signatories for Contractual Documents and Documents for Requesting Funds Pertaining to the Texas General Land Office, DR four-three-three-two, Community Development Block Grant Disaster Recovery Program, CDBGDR, Infrastructure Gr- Contract Number twenty dash zero-six-five-one-four-zero-C-five-nine-four. Ms. Zito?
Yes, this is a resolution to update the personnel as signers for the documents for the infrastructure grant.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
Motion. Second.
Can we have a motion in a second? Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
And Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Zito. Item eight J, consider a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute change order number one with N and T Construction for the City of Orange Recreation Center. Mr. Wolf?
Yes, Mayor and Council, thank you. This is a resolution that provides for change order number one on our City of Orange Recreation Center. Uh, it includes seventy-eight days due to rain, the exceptional rain and bad weather that we had during the months of June, July, and August. And it also provides thirty-nine, an additional thirty-nine thousand, one hundred and seventeen dollar increase to the, uh, contract, original contract amount due to foundation changes that we encountered when we unearthed the old auditorium. Uh, we had concrete i- in place where we didn't need it. And then it was absent, uh, some concrete foundation that the S-bills actually showed, so we had to add concrete. And, uh, we also had to remove about a hundred and ninety-six cubic yards of unsuitable soil material because of the swimming pool had leached out all those years and migrated and caused, uh, the soil to be unacceptable. So we had to excavate that out and replace it. So, uh, it's a very small change order in comparison to the overall contract amount. It's less than just slightly over one percent. So we recommend, uh, acceptance of the change order.
All right. Do we have any mo- a motion?
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
And Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
All right, thank you, Mr. Wolf, on that project. And, and I know it's been rough, but it's, it's awesome to see things taking place because I can't wait to see our kids get in there and have a good time.
We hope this week to start our first placement of the new concrete into the forms, uh, on the foundation. So once we can get that grade beam and slab up out of the ground, uh, we'll be off and running and it'll go much faster.
Thank you so much. Item eight K, consider a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute change order number two with Neutron Electrical Services for the outdoor electrical repair project. Mr. Wolf?
Yes, Mayor. Uh, this is a, a resolution that provides for change order number two on our outdoor electrical repair project. This was as a result of hurricane damage, uh, that was, insurance had covered. Uh, this is change order number two for thirty additional calendar days. And it's due to the trouble that the contractor had in obtaining the necessary fixtures and light poles for the ball fields. But we have those in place now, ready to go.
Thank you. Okay, do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Can we have a motion in a second? Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
And Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Wolf. Item eight L, consider a res- a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute change order number two with Texas Materials Group LLC, PBA Gulf Coast for the Riverside Pavilion paving and drainage improvements. Mr. Wolf?
Yes, Mayor, this is a resolution that also provides for a change order. This is change order number two on our Riverside Pavilion paving and drainage project. We're now complete with that project. If you have a chance, please go by and look at it. We're very proud of the, the way it turned out. Uh, this adds fifteen calendar days for extra work. And it adds an additional twenty thousand nine hundred and sixty-one dollars due to extra saw cutting of the concrete, breaking out of the transition areas where the new concrete meets the old concrete. We had a few challenges to make that transition, uh, absent tripping hazards, if you will. And so, uh, we recommend approval of this change order.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Wolf.
Thank you, Mayor.
That's, that's three projects that involve improving or establishing new opportunities for families and for children to enjoy here in the community. So thank you.
Yes, sir.
Very excited. Okay, on to item nine, consider a motion to adopt the Orange Economic Development Corporation's annual budget for the fiscal year two thousand twenty-two. Ms. Zito?
Yes, Mayor. So we, earlier at the EDC meeting, we finally adopted the, the final adoption of the EDC budget and so the council must also do that. We presented that budget then. Do y'all want to go over it?
I think we've done it several times already. Thank you. Okay, do we have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second.
Can we have a motion in a second? Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
And Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Definitely look forward to new projects and new opportunities in the, in the new year. So thank you. Item, uh, nine B, consider a motion accepting the grant funding for the Fire Department in the amount of one hundred thousand dollars from the twenty-twenty FEMA Fire Ag Grant and to correct the resolution twenty-twenty-one dash seventy-eight that represented the amount of one hundred and seven thousand, one hundred and forty-two dollars and eighty-six cents. Mr. Frenzel?
Uh, Mayor and Council, this is just a more housekeeping, uh, issue than anything else. At the last regular council meeting, you approved our grant for us to receive a hundred and seven, a hundred and forty-two thou- a hundred and seven thousand, a hundred and forty-two dollars and eighty-six cents. When we went in to actually accept the grant, the grant had been reduced, uh, by, uh, seven thousand, seven hundred and eighty dollars. So the grant went from one hundred and twelve, seven eighty to actually a hundred and five thousand. We're still happy to receive a hundred and five thousand. But for bookkeeping purposes, we will actually, the city will actually get a check or a reimbursement for a hundred thousand instead of the one oh seven, one forty-two eighty-six. So we just wanted to straighten it up.
Okay. Thank you for that. Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
And Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, Chief. Onto item nine C, I'm sorry, motion passes. Item nine C, consider a motion suspending Section twelve point six-one-one, eleven C one of the Code of Ordinances for ninety days to allow parking, use, and occupancy in a recreational vehicle or travel trailer by a property owner due to hurricane Laura-related damage. Mr. Knopf?
Yes, sir, the ninety-day period that the City Council granted, uh, for hurricane Laura-related that would allow people to live in an RV, uh, on their property while their house has been repaired, that ninety-day period has expired. So we need to see if you want to extend it for another ninety days or just, uh, let it expire.
My question would be, how many, do we, is there a number of how many are still on this list at this time? Do we know if there's an overwhelming amount or?
Um, most of them have been repaired. Noting, there's a few, uh, but we're getting very, very few new applications uh, for the hurricane Laura damage.
Okay. Um, there comes a point where we do have, I mean, it's been a year. But if, if, if there are still some in need, we'll, I'll, I'll recommend we go another ninety days.
I s- I second.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion in a second. Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
And Mr. Bailey? Okay, motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Knopf. Item nine D, consider a motion waiving and/or adjusting permit fees for repairs to property due to damage from Hurricane Laura for ninety days. Mr. Knopf?
Yes, sir, the, uh, waiver of the fees for building permits that are related to hurricane Laura, uh, damage, the ninety-day period has expired. So we need to see if you want to extend it, uh, the waiver of the fees for hurricane Laura damage for another ninety days.
Okay, do we have a motion to extend?
A motion.
Second.
Can we have a motion in a second? Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
And Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Knopf. Cons- item nine E, consider a motion reappointing Gordon Warlow to the Planning and Zoning Commission for a term ending September fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three. Mr. Knopf?
Yes, sir, uh, there are, uh, three people on the Planning and Zoning Commission whose terms, uh, are up. And so there are no term limits anymore on any of our commissions. So, uh, Mr. Warlow, uh, is, his term is expiring. And Mr. Smith and then Mr. Mortimer also, their terms are expiring. expiring, and all three have agreed to continue serving if it's the council's desire.
Okay. All right. Do we have a motion to reappoint Mr. Warlow?
Motion.
Okay, we have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Okay, Mr. Burge?
No.
Okay, Ms. McKenna? You said a motion?
Yes.
You had a second. Okay, yes?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
Mr. Bailey?
No.
Okay. And, so that's two and two.
Yep.
It's up to you.
I guess it's up to me then, uh, I'm the tiebreaker.
It's up to you.
Um, I will, I, I will deny this one. Okay? So, with that being said, do we have any other names on the list that can be brought forward?
Yes, sir. After the agenda went out, some names have come forward, and if you would like, we can just push the rest of these to next week's agenda, if you would like, so that you can see who the current incumbents are, and then also who the new applicants are.
Okay, let's, can we do that?
Want to do that, just push the appointments to the P N Z to next week's agenda?
Yeah, that could be.
And include those other applications.
Okay. Unless we, I mean, we have enough here to get through them?
Yeah.
Or do we?
That's what get through them.
Okay. We'll, we'll, we'll just go ahead and knock them out, and then that way we can see who all is on the list, and that way we know if these people aren't approved, then we'll have to.
We have to fill them.
We'll have to fill them.
Okay, so we need a motion to table appointments to the P N Z, or you want to go ahead and fill the other positions?
We're gonna go ahead. We're gonna go ahead and do it here. Okay, item nine F, consider a motion reappointing Weldon Smith to the Planning and Zoning Commission for a term ending September fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three. Mr. Knopf?
Uh, yes, again, Mr. Smith, his term is, is expiring, and he is eligible to be appointed to another term if the council so desires.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Motion.
Okay. Do we have a second? Okay. If we do not have a second, then that motion dies?
Yes, sir.
Okay. On to item nine G, consider a motion reappointing George Mortimer to the Planning and Zoning Commission for a term ending September fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three. Mr. Knopf?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mortimer, again, is eligible to be reappointed to the Planning and Zoning Commission if the council so desires.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Okay, do we have a second?
Y- yes.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Mr. McKenn- I'm sorry. Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
And Mr. Bailey.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. All right. Okay, thank you, Mr. Knopf. Item nine H, review of possible alternatives in the closure of a railroad track crossing within the city. Mr. Coons?
Mayor, Council, and may I ask Jim to help us out on this. You know, a couple of weeks ago, from directives from councils passed as part of our agreement with Tech Stott and the railroad, we closed our sixth railroad crossing in the city. Again, just kind of a little recap that back in the day, the day being oh nine, ten, but, but before I got here, probably before many of you, were on the council, that, you know, the city was looking a way to open up the frontage street, which is now behind, if you will, the Chick-fil-A and close to Childs building materials, open that up to give us a frontage road. So, if you, again, just kind of think back, there's, one could not drive along the interstate on the frontage road until, you know, we came through, worked in an agreement with Tech Stott and the railroad, and send the city, so a three-way agreement that if we, if the Tech Stott would build the railroad crossing there at the frontage streets, the two, north and south interstate, you know, agreements with the railroad, we had to close three other crossings in the city. So, after some public hearings, some recommendations from our police chief at the time, and our fire chief, and, you know, taking into look public safety and those things, and, and consideration of other factors, they closed over time, five, and then finally got down to, this year, we're ready to close the sixth crossing, and that is the Barkin Street Crossing. Of course, you know, fast forward to today, well, let me back up before I said fast forward to today, and, and kind of in conjunction with that, there was a movement to install a quiet zone through Orange, of which that, that did take place from down on Main to Cordray. Now, with the idea being, once that sixth crossing is closed there at Barkins, we could extend the quiet zone from Cordray, really all the way up to Alley Payne, but, you know, to, to the interstate. So, anyway, we closed Barkins just with some, some barricades, and then there's been some discussion to, if there's alternatives to closing that railroad crossing. So, informally, you know, we, we're not presenting here tonight any ideas or this morning, but any ideas, but we kind of want to get y'all's feedback is, to what extent do you want us to delve into these alternatives? You know, we have not formally reached out to Tech Stott or the railroad to say, you know, we now want to do something different. So, kind of want to get y'all's input. You know, if we say, we don't want to close it, okay, we gotta close something else. Or if, if we do want to close it, then we'll, we'll continue forward. Again, kind of a discussion currently, you know, the, the path forward is, again, as we were, we, been the staff, directed by council, was to close that. That's kind of on hold, so kind of want to get y'all's thoughts on some possible alternatives that we can research, Jim can, and his folks can research, and then we can present that for action at a future council meeting. And I will say, and before, I'm sorry, Mayor, Mayor, but Tech Stotts and the railroad's timelines are not necessarily our timeline. So, if we say, hey, in, in two weeks, we want this report about what we can and can't do, that, that getting that information from those entities is kind of, again, will, you know, dependent on them. So, if we don't get it in two weeks, but we'll present this back to, to council when we get that information available. And I see Jim standing up. I don't know if he wants to add something to it about some preliminary cost or whatever challenges we may see.
Again, we do not have an official written response from the railroad. We have verbally touched base with several railroad agents. They have indicated that we're contractually bound to close what we said we were going to close. But we're waiting on that. I, I went back and I said, may I substitute, say Cherry Street?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, that's an option.
Mm-hmm.
Um, as an example. That's not to say we would close Cherry, but as an example. In lieu of Barkins, would we be allowed to close Cherry? And I'm waiting on an official response in writing from the railroad.
Okay.
They may not a- agree with it. I don't know.
Have a question. In the event that we were able to do that, would we get permission from the folks that live on Cherry Street if they want their street closed or not? Would that go out to them and a public hearing for them to be able to come and say, no, we don't want ours closed either?
That, that would be a council, that would be a council direction to give staff.
Okay.
I, I'm, I'm just.
And I will say, that's why this is not an action item tonight. I didn't want any of the residents to say, oh, you did something or not did something.
Right, but that's what I was asking. If that would go out to them, and they would be able to have a chance to come and say, like, these other people are upset about the other one. They would, you know.
Somebody's going to be upset.
Right.
As, as Mayor said, either today or yesterday, when there's change, you know, there's always pushback.
Right.
Mr. Wolf, did it have to be closed at this particular time while I tens under such major construction? They couldn't have picked a more inopportune time to close that crossing because the locals know to use the back roads to get around the construction. You know, maybe in two years, it's not, it's not going to be as important to us with the other two new crossings.
We, we could possibly delay it a few more months. That would be on the outside, I would say, because this has been such a long time coming, and now I had put them off in, in just conversation. I've, my, our defense or our reasoning was that until Bob Hall was allowed to have both northbound and southbound traffic, which it has now, now that they've completed the bridge work, I told them that once we got accessibility in both directions on Bob Hall, then we would go ahead and consummate our agreement. We would go ahead and close that number six crossing. Our quiet zone now ends at Cordray. Uh, it would include Barkins, obviously, when we permanently close that, there would no longer be a crossing there. We have reached out to the railroad for an extended quiet zone that would include the two new frontage roads. Because each frontage road has double gates, we have, we will have, we will not have to spend any type of funding to upgrade those crossings to qualify for a quiet zone. They qualify for a quiet zone automatically with the double gates in each direction.
That's fantastic.
So, we're good there. We've met with a consultant, met with railroad officials right before, right at the same time we were closing Barkins. We said, okay, we barricaded Barkins in good faith. We wanted to honor that agreement. Now, we're asking to create a second new quiet zone or extend the original quiet zone. We have to create a new quiet zone that would include those two new frontage road crossings. That would make it quiet all the way through that area. He would not blow the whistle until he got to Alley Payne. But if Barkins does stay open, then the quiet zone will end at Cordray. There would not be a need to have the two frontage roads at the interstate simply because he's blowing that whistle a quarter mile on either side of Barkins. So, that would kill that.
Well, I'm going to say that even if the interstate wasn't in such a mess right now, that railroad crossing is still going to be important to people that live in that community and to the, the school. And, and, you know, and it is to me, because I travel that road going back and forth every day. So, it's still going to be important to people, whether the freeway's finished or not.
There's also a safety concern with that crossing. The trucks that deviate off of the frontage road or the interstate when you have a closure, when you have a traffic accident, they'll take Bob Hall.
Yes.
Not being familiar, they'll try to cross that, and they're high center.
Yeah.
So, if it stays open, something's going to have to be done. We will be required probably by the railroad to do something of significance to either raise the grade on Bob Hall, to be able to cross that track and not high center.
Right.
Or raise it on the other side, one of the two, which, you know, is going to be significant.
Is it the railroad's stand currently that we follow through with what we agreed to do?
Yes. Oh, everything I've gotten from them so far in the form of, you know, light emails and responses and talking to them, they say they've checked with their uppers, and they say we're contractually obligated. But I, I've asked for a, if we could make a substitution in writing. I'm waiting on that to come back.
I think we should explore every, everything we can before we say we can't.
Yeah, I, I agree, and that's, that's where we're at right now.
I'd like to make a comment, too, because I think I need to share this information. If you'll let me in. No formal agreement, but I do want to remind the council that when we were working the Chick-fil-A and Starbucks projects, there were executives that came in to the site before it was even signed, and the, the roaring of the trains came through, and one of the things they asked was, could the city take a look at this? Because you have to consider their model. Their drive-through is on the east end of each of those projects, and it, and they've worked through it, and thankfully, they didn't pull back, and they committed to the projects. And we shared with them at that point in time that we had worked on a quiet zone south of that area. So, we landed the projects, and you've seen the difference that it's made in sales stacks and property value. Now, we're currently working projects three and four with them being under the understanding, because we've disclosed it, that we've taken formal actions to extend that quiet zone to the interstate. So, we have to balance that as well. If we change anything, then I'm going to have to go back to the developer and disclose that, you know, sorry, but we're not going to be able to extend that quiet zone. Now, obviously, it won't affect Chick-fil-A and Starbucks because they're landing, but it could risk projects three and four. So, we've got to balance that, and I'll be glad to do that if it's the wish of the council, because I'm working with the developer right now in terms of projects three and four, and they're looking at site plans and plating, and a lot of movement is going on with projects three and four. So, just please keep that in mind as well, that we have to balance that interest because it's important to them.
Yes.
So, thank you. Go ahead, Jim. No more questions?
Yeah.
No more.
All right, Mr. Bailey, any questions? Mr. Childs?
No.
Ms. McKenna? Okay. I do want to say, I, I, I did want to jump out in front, but everyone has gotten a chance to speak first, so I don't want to reiterate everything. The biggest thing that I wanted the community to know, the gentleman who spoke several times, and you were here back today, thank you for staying to hear all of this, was that we heard your, your response. We had everyone calling and emailing. We immediately jumped on it. I do want to thank Mr. Wolf, Mr. Coons, Mr. Treyhand for working with us on trying to find out what could happen. In this position, there are some things that were set in place before we were here, right? But we're the ones who are here now, and so we are dealing with it, and we are not going to sit there and point the finger and say, oh, it's not my fault. You know, we will be good stewards of the taxpayers' money and things that affect the community. So, I do appreciate Mr. Wolf. I know that you received as much mail as I did and all the rest of us up here on council in trying to figure out if we can make an agreement to change what was already contractually signed over ten or eleven years ago. But we will continue to work on it, but the main thing was is that I wanted the community to know that we were adamantly trying to find a solution to this problem, and that it wasn't just thrown to the side, and that we did not care about that side of town or that portion of the community. This is something that was put into our lap from many years ago, but we will continue to address it. So, thank you. Okay, with that being said, we have a city manager report. Mr. Coons?
Yes, sir. Counsel, if you will, I believe we placed in front of you, there, there is a, and I've discussed this with the mayor late last week, just kind of knew, I just kind of found out about it, about the city, if you were informally joining the Coalition for Stay- Sustainable Flood Insurance to ask Congress to reauthorize the National Flood Insurance Program. Basically, all we are going to do is we're going to reach out to this coalition, say, please add the City of Orange to part of their letter. You have the letter in front of you, just saying that we need to continue currently the flood insurance program as it is. Also, just to reiterate all, what Ms. Woodson said about Waste Management, just to let everybody know, we are, you know, kind of once we get this backlog behind us, we are going to discuss with Waste Management what kind of adjustment we can make to the citizens' sanitation bill. And then, thirdly, counsel, again, you have some handouts in front of you in regards to redistricting. Okay, we have a video that we need y'all to watch before the April twelfth council meeting. I have it on a thumb drive. Mike Zito can help you if you want to do it on the Dropbox. I know there's other ways of seeing it. It's about thirty minutes, and then some of me asking the, the gentlemen some questions about redistricting. But that is a process that we're going to have to review, perhaps go for. So, we do need you to watch that video. I will say it's probably easier to watch it in the luxury of your own home than it is here, so that's why we're doing it that way. So, if you would, please work with us and watch that thing, and let me know when and where. So, we'll get you to sign saying you watched it when and where. And that is all I have at this time.
Okay. All right, city council report, starting with Mr. Bailey. Anything, sir?
I'd like to report that the garbage has been completely cleaned up on the two-lane road out to the city limit sign. I have spoken with the city manager about getting some no dumping signs now that we've got that area cleaned and mowed. So, I appreciate that, Mike.
All right.
Okay, Mr. Childs?
No report.
Okay, no report. Ms. McKenna?
Uh, anxious for our Oktoberfest.
All right. Mr. Burge?
Um, I had a few calls about Sixteenth Street. There is a huge, it was, I get furniture, trash, all kinds of stuff. It's kind of catacornered from the old community church, and it looks like somebody just cleaned out a house and put all the furniture and all the trash and all of that on Sixteenth Street. It's been there probably two weeks, maybe. So, I don't know if that's our grapple, needs to pick that up, because obviously, it would be, but it's been there for a long time, and I've had several calls about it, so.
We'll definitely have that looked at. There'll probably be fine for the property owner, I'm sure, for dumping all of that, and then we'll see about getting it. Last but not least, I do want to thank everybody for coming. Before we go to executive session, I want to thank Waste Management for coming out. It's been rough the last few weeks, but a lot of times, just saying a few words and offering an explanation of what's going on goes a long way. When, when people are, you know, in dire need of service, they don't understand what may have happened, so we appreciate you. I also want to thank Ms. Zito and her staff for coming up with all of the numbers and the computations needed to get us to where we are. I want to thank Mr. Wolf and all of your staff for all that you're doing. Mr. Knopf, to you as well, helping us keep the city clean, helping us clean up all these dilapidated properties. helping us clean up all these dilapidated properties. Chief Frenzel and Chief, back there, Chief Martin in the corner, and also to Ms. Manasco, we appreciate you all for all that y'all do. Um, it's been a wonderful year. We're not, we're almost there, but the fiscal year is about to start over, and so we look forward to what the Lord has for us in two thousand twenty-two. And last but not least, Orange Tober, with these eleven thousand pumpkins that we have heard about, C V B, Ms. Lee Ann Dallas and crew, would like to encourage everyone that all of those pumpkins will be given away. So, if you want to pick a pumpkin decoration in your yard or in front of your business, come on out and get some of those pumpkins. And also, thank you to the young lady who's here with the acquisition program. We appreciate you as well. So, with that being said, we will move to adjourn to close executive session. Deliberation with city attorney, deliberation with legal counsel per search of Texas Government Code five-five-one-point-zero-seven-one, consultation on collective bargaining with firefighters local one-four-three-two, also consultation with Orange Municipal Police Association. And last but not least, most importantly, personnel matters, evaluation of city manager, Mr. Michael Coons. So, we will, you can hang out in the library, or you can hang out outside, and we will let you know when we reconvene in open session. Thank you all. Convene in open session, take an action as necessary regarding items eleven A one and A two. Mr. Coons, anything?
Uh, for eleven A one, we do need y'all to approve the new C B A with the International Association of Firefighters Local one-four-three-two.
Okay, so regarding action on item eleven A, do I have a motion?
Motion.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. On to item eleven A two, do I have a motion to approve?
No. There's no action.
No action on eleven A two, okay, I'm sorry. And eleven A three, there's no action to be taken either, right?
Correct.
Okay, and so do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion passes. Meeting's adjourned. Thank you all.